Okay, hello and welcome to the September 9th, 2014 meeting for the Hillsborough Township Board of Education. The Hillsborough Township Board of Education will be conducting its regular meeting at 7:30 PM and it's 7 AM 4 or 7 PM. There we go. Okay. We're going to call a meeting to order. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on September 4th, 2013 to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, actually, from here, let's take a roll call.
Surely. Ms. Bogachewski? Ms. Santafante? Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas? Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kint?
Here.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
And Ms. Swanson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have one, okay, so we're officially in order. And in a quick, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows. The matter to be discussed is legal advice on transportation contracts. The matter discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Seven.
Seven.
And a second.
Second.
Chris Lorine and Ingrid. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're going into executive session, we'll be back at 7:30. Thank you. Okay, we're back from executive session, apologize for the timing. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmoud?
Surely. Ms. Bogachewski? Ms. Santafante? Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kint?
Here.
Mrs. Lay?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Swanson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, great. Let us rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have the correspondence as is listed in the agenda and I'm ready for this superintendent's report. We're waiting for the technology for the...
We have, we just need a minute.
Okay. Can I jump to new business?
Sure, please.
Okay, we're going to, in the interest of time, thank you, we're going to move to new business, item number seven. So first we'll open up new business to members of the public. For those who have new business, feel free to come on up to the podium if you can state your name and address. That would be great. Thank you.
My name is John Pratt. I've lived here in Hillsborough for 43 years. My children graduated from Hillsborough High School a long time ago. I'm here because I'm complaining about the flag that's on the floor at the entrance to this building. This is the flag that won independence for our country. Won freedom of the seas for our ships in the War of 1812. It freed the slaves. Won the West. It cut short First World War and that long period of insane slaughter. It flies today over the tomb of the unknown soldier. And it flies over vast fields of white crosses, one for each of our sons lost in battle in World War II. It's the flag to which our prisoners of war remain faithful in spite of torture. How shall our children learn respect for this flag when the pillars of our society throw it at their feet to be trampled with the dirt on their shoes? I put those pictures on the table, one for each table. That's a picture of the flag that's on the floor at the entrance to this building. I and others I've spoken with in Hillsborough residents desire this, the school board pick up this flag off the floor as soon as possible and permanently. Thank you.
Thank you. For those who haven't been to Eris, when you enter the building, there is a welcome mat. It's Welcome to Auton Road, home of the Mini Raiders, in which there is a mascot, an emblem of a Mini Raider, in which on one hand he holds an American flag, another holds an Eris flag. So it is not meant with any disrespect. I truly appreciate you coming here and sharing. We all have respect for our flag and the symbolism it has for this great nation, but it disturbs, disturbs you, and I understand that, so I'd like to move that to administration and take a look at how we should proceed with that.
Will do.
Mr. Gillette?
Could you, anybody else in the public?
What's that we do?
Oh, can I comment on this one then, out of turn?
Yep.
Okay. As I recall, the, the welcome mat, if you will, mosaic artwork near the entrance was designed, I think, when the school opened, maybe 14 years ago, I think it was by a student. And I think this might be a nice opportunity to take that artwork and take it up off the floor, maybe display it in another place in the school, and have maybe another type of contest or something with current students to have something else designed in its place. I think this is a nice opportunity for that, and I would suggest that to administration, look into something like that.
Okay. Thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Gillette. Other new business?
Hello, good evening. I'm going to start by asking you guys a question. Do you remember your child's kindergarten experience and the first time they got on the bus? Okay, well, let me tell you the story of what happened to me this afternoon. I waited at my child's bus stop. He was supposed to get off the bus at 3:23. I called the Transportation Department at 4 o'clock, asking where he was, and I was told, "Hmm, the bus is running late, just give it a little bit of time." I waited a little bit more. I called the principal of the school of Woodford Elementary, and I asked him where my child was. He told me, "The bus was running late, by an hour. He just was picked up, he'll be there in about 15 to 20 minutes." I waited longer. I called again, and what I was greeted with is, "I don't know how to tell you this, but your child is missing, and we have filed a missing police report because we don't know where your child is." Now let me tell you about my child. My child's an autistic kindergarten child with limited vocabulary. My child was supposed to have had an aide on his bus. I called this morning because the aide did not show up with my child. Where was his aide? I'm also asking, what happened between when the bus failed to show up, when the bus got there to begin with, and the driver said, "Hmm, I don't feel like driving today, I'm not going to do this." And then promptly, the principal had called Transportation. Transportation had called someone else. I know the person, I've trusted her with my children before. She's a very good bus driver, I know her well. She was not given information from the Transportation Department on who these children were, what their special needs were, what their names were, and what their addresses were. How dare Transportation do that to my autistic five-year-old child? How dare you do that to him? He woke up from being found, and the bus driver asked, "Who are you, honey?" He took his backpack and did this, and it had his name on it. He couldn't articulate his name. He should have had an aide. And then, on top of that, the iPad that he had had last year to communicate was removed from his IEP. Silly me, I thought he could communicate his name. Clearly, he can't. I am livid. My child was on the, somewhere, somewhere, my child was somewhere. I didn't know where he was. For all I knew, before I knew who the bus driver was, he was on the side of a ditch somewhere. For all I knew, Kensington failed to take him where he needed to go. For all I knew, somebody kidnapped him. I didn't know where he was. That shouldn't happen to any parent, period, let alone a child who has no communication abilities, and to have this happen. How dare Transportation and this district do that to my child? How dare you do this, period? I'm asking. Now, you know what, I'm demanding a meeting. I'm expecting a meeting tomorrow morning with the superintendent. I'm demanding with Transportation. I'm demanding with the principal. I'm demanding with Lenore Johnson. And I want this fixed, and until it can be fixed, I cannot feel comfortable putting my child on this bus. I cannot feel comfortable in trusting my child's care in your district. Something needs done, and it needs done, period. What happened? If this were, this could have been any other day. Something needs done in the protocol to make sure that our children are safe. Our children are not safe until something is fixed. It needs fixed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt?
Thank you, Mrs. Lannick. We share your outrage. This was very disconcerting, what occurred. We were exceptionally disappointed with the contractor who worked on that particular route, who failed to complete the bus route as indicated. And although your, your child was quickly found on the bus, fell asleep on the bus, the fact that it took that much time in order to communicate and resolve that issue is unacceptable, and we'll be looking into it. I'd be more than happy to meet with you, as well as the administrative team, to ensure that this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business from the public? Okay. New business from the board?
I'd like to share something that school, the board members received in their email and then share it with the public. So the head, the executive director of NJ SBA had sent an email to all school board members, and the topic was sustainability and STEM. And so, you know, I trust that you read it, but I just wanted to reinforce some key points for the public. In, in this century, more than 60% of new jobs will require STEM, and that is a good, strong background in science, technology, engineering, and math. And we are on our way, I'm proud to say, in Hillsborough School District because we have put it into our, what is it called, the plan, what was that plan?
Strategic.
Strategic plan. And, and so, we strive to meet the things that are in our strategic plan. But I just wanted to let you know how, the importance that NJ SBA, as well as the heads of the Superintendents Association and NJEA, have placed on the link between sustainability and STEM. So for example, just, just to say it simply, that we are living in a world of diminishing resources, and if the students have the tools in order to solve problems, they will be able to meet these problems in a very confident way. So anything we can do in our district to reinforce this and give our students the tools to, to approach problem solving, it's called, it's called evidence-based learning, and, you know, I have talked about it before, we can use our schools like a laboratory. So they can look at the environment, the rooms that they, they learn in, and say, "Okay, what are, what are the issues here that we could improve?" It gives them the confidence to say, "I have a piece of, I can provide a piece of the solution to the issues that are facing my world." And so I wanted to, next week, I think our board is going to have a meeting, it's like a self-evaluation board meeting, and I think sometimes boards can not only follow the strategic plan that was laid out, you know, years ago, but also to lead the direction for a school district and to encourage certain things. So it's something that I'd like us to talk about if possible. And just so you know that they had selected a few schools in 2011, so the spring of 2011, to pilot and gather data to see if, when you did reinforce and concentrate on sustainability, how would that improve the curriculum, student achievement, and also actually operational issues within the school district? And so they're beginning to gather the data for that, and I would encourage our district to, you know, take that data and use it for ourselves. At the school board's meeting last fall, I spent half an hour talking to John Henry, who was hired by NJ SBA as their, he is now the head of their STEM curriculum, he's, you know, that's his position. And, and we are the first in the country, New Jersey School Boards Association is the first association to place a STEM and sustainability specialist on their staff. So I think we can partner and realize that if our school boards association is in the forefront on this, this is something that we can do too, here in Hillsborough.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Lay. Any other new business from board members? Okay. Going back to the agenda, we're now moving to the superintendent's report.
Thank you. We welcomed close to 7,200 students this morning to our schools. It was certainly a very exciting day for, for our children and our teachers. I had the pleasure of being in five of our schools today, and I can tell you, there was a great deal of smiles throughout the district. This evening, what I'd like to do is to share with you a little bit about what we were doing administratively, leading up to our, our opening day today. This presentation is entitled, "What We Did Over Our 2013 Summer Vacation." I'm going to hand it over to, to our assistant superintendents and our business administrator to kind of walk you through each of the three major areas of our strategic plan. So first, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Antounas to share what her departments were working on.
Good evening. Well, it's easy to see what we did not do on our summer vacation, and that goes for teachers, administrators throughout the district. Nobody went on any water rides, nobody sat on the beach and on that beautiful blue ocean, and nobody swam with the whales. What we did do, though, was focused our energies on three things: common assessment development, curriculum writing throughout the district, and professional development for our teachers. Over the course of the summer, we had 184 teachers write common assessments, K-12. Teachers accepted to write common assessments, had to attend first a mandatory common assessment development training session facilitated by the supervisors. The supervisors developed, planned, developed, and facilitated that session with the teachers to learn how to write a good, robust common assessment that is aligned with not only our curriculum, but with the expectations that this Common Core State Standard set forth. Prior to actually writing some of the common assessments, some of the curriculum had to be tweaked a little bit, as you, as certainly the board knows. Last summer, we wrote a ton of curriculum, and through feedback that we received from the teachers throughout the year, they had the year to work with the curriculum, and through that feedback, some of it needed to be tweaked a little bit. They felt the pacing was a little off, they wanted to move a couple of units here or there. So we were able to do that, and then we, the supervisors proceeded to assist the teachers in writing the common assessment developments. The time and discussion that took place during the common assessment development was fascinating. The supervisors came back energized, the teachers were exhausted, the supervisors were exhausted, but we've got some really, really awesome common assessments out there for our students. Now, we wrote tons of curriculum last year, but we still had some curriculum writing to do this year. We had 27 teachers writing curriculum this summer, nothing compared to last year. However, this is over four content areas. This does not include the little tweaks that we had to do for the other curriculum. This were, this was things like Chinese, the transition of Chinese into levels one and two, because some of our students took level one, some are entering level two, several AP courses, there were several new science courses that we wrote the curriculum for, and then some curriculum in the Visual and Performing Arts Department and Facts Department that needed to be updated a bit. And we had a lot of professional development going on within the district. Aside from our typical teachers who went out on their own time for PD, for daily things, we had four teachers go out to AP institutes over the summer. We had teachers attend Rider University, the Connect Ed Institute, Quest through Princeton University. Two huge things we did were professional development institutes, which were developed by our supervisors. Again, U-Me and the PLC was planned and developed by our literacy supervisor, Sheila Cooper, our science supervisor, Kim Feltry, our mathematics supervisor, Tracy Nurr, and our current social studies supervisor, Matt Mingle. They, there were 35 teachers who attended, five days, six hours a day. Mr. Whitlock and I were able to attend for a little while, one of the days, I walked around another one of the days. The teachers were engrossed in discussion, in the work. We've got pictures to show it, we've got a video to show it, which we won't show you tonight, but if you'd like to see it, we're more than happy to share it with you. The attendees were provided five books, each on a different topics. They read them, they reported out. This is over a week. They worked hard, the discussion that came out of it was phenomenal, and I'm hoping that some of these people will step up and assist in our teacher training, teacher model of professional development that we're going to unroll soon. One of the things that the supervisors planned for in developing the institute, U-Me and the PLC, was understanding, it was really important for them to talk about understanding the mindset of all the things that they talked about, best practices, SGOs, quality questioning, digital learning, grading and homework, formative assessments, and how everybody's mindset, those are really heavy topics, and everybody has very distinct opinions on all of those things. So one of the things that they concentrated on that first day and throughout the week was understanding the mindset and how to work with people of varying mindsets and effectively deal with each other, to come out in the end with something everybody could agree on. That's a discussion that's just beginning within our district. We've been talking about it for a while, but to have 35 teachers attend was phenomenal. The other institute that took place was planned and developed by Sheila Cooper, and it was writer's workshop. We had 23 attendees, four days, six hours a day. Essentially, it talked about the components of the reading and writing and creating the physical environment to support the workshop model, which is something that we're doing throughout the district. They talked about interactive Read-A-Loud lessons, they actually planned and did mini lessons for either reading or writing during this four-day institute, and the point was for Sheila to support the teachers in the logistics of how to work this in the classroom, started today, with the first day with their students. From meeting areas, as we said, to the physical environments of the room, readers and writers workshops, managing the systems to support the model in the classroom, again, the teachers worked hard, the supervisors worked hard, and I think that we're going to see really great results from this. I have to really also say that one little stat that I didn't put in there was, there were over 530 timesheets processed in a very timely manner from Denise, my secretary, and I have to, I have to thank her for that. As the supervisors, the teachers filled them out, supervisors signed them, got them to me, we filled them out, turned them around to the business office, so to get the teachers paid. It was possible that if the teacher planned well, they could actually attend either common assessment development, an institute, or curriculum writing every single week over the summer and get paid for every, every bit of it. So I think that's really, really a wonderful thing, and the planning that went into doing that was phenomenal with the supervisors. I have to thank the teachers who wrote the common assessments, who tweaked or wrote curriculum, and who attended the PD institutes. A special thank you goes out to my wonderful curriculum supervisory team, who planned, developed, facilitated, and worked with our teachers all summer, keeping the focus on assisting teachers in enhancing their professional learning by focusing on what is best for our students in Hillsborough. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our supervisors and teachers who participated in all of the activities over the summer. This time, let's turn it over to Mr. Whitlock, who'll share from the HR perspective what we've been doing over the summer. Mr. Whitlock?
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Well, Personnel Department was somewhat busy this summer as well. Oh, here it is. You see the silhouettes? We had a few more vacancies than the six silhouettes depicted there. In fact, going into the summer, we had 104 positions to fill. So we reviewed approximately 5,200 applications that were submitted. We interviewed approximately 520 candidates for those positions. I personally interviewed 107, and I can sit here and tell you that we hired 104. So when your children walked into the school buildings today, they were all greeted by teachers that were excited to be here. That first slide, can I get back to the first slide? Hello, my name is, so that is a name tag that figuratively is affixed to 104 new folks that work in the great district of Hillsborough. So that, in addition to working on professional development and training for the new teacher and educator evaluation system, that was the major focus of our Personnel Department. And I thank my staff greatly for the work that they've put in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitlock. Many new faces. Our new teacher orientation process that went on for a complete week that was led by both Mr. Whitlock and Dr. Antounas, as well as our very capable supervisory staff, was very well received. So now let's turn to the operations area, and Mr. Mahmoud.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Mr. Whitlock, you always let me go after you, and I always, you could have kept on going after me. I always beat the poor guy up because he's always after me. I should be no longer than two or three hours, so if we have some time, we'll go through our capital projects. No, we should be a few minutes looking at some of the pictures that, all the wonderful capital projects that we worked on during the summer. There was a lot of money invested in these capital projects, so certainly, there was a lot of work that had to be done. Nothing in particular order, I'm just going to run through the projects, no reason why I chose any project in any particular order. The first project is the Amsterdam, I'm sorry, the Middle School STEM Lab. Clearly, the scope of that project was to renovate and upgrade two former woodshops into STEM labs. The cost of the cabinetry was a surprise for us because we were over budgeted, it was actually, came in over budget by $62,000. We are able to start the STEM labs, they have been completed to a certain extent, with temporary shelving, which is being built as we speak, as we go out to bid for permanent cabinets. So the project is complete, we are waiting a punch list, and we're also waiting the fixture for the permanent cabinets. Let's take a look at the Middle School STEM Lab before, see how nice and neat that was. You'll see some nice pictures as we move along. The next is the STEM Lab in process, and finally, the STEM Lab complete. Now, that's without the furniture inside, so it looks a little bit different with furniture, but you can see that the work was done pretty well. Let's look, look at the Let's look at the high school server, which is the server room. Obviously, the scope of that work was, we had some major issues with heating risk. This is not a pretty project. However, we had to put an air conditioner in there, a unit, to make sure that our servers don't go down. That is complete, we're just awaiting a punch list. The next is to talk about wood firm paving. We, the scope of that project was to mill and repave the front parking lot, which includes curbs and additional drainage. That project is complete, we're waiting a final closeout documentation. One of the issues that I think Mr. Gillette mentioned was, as the contractor was working on that lot, unfortunately, they knocked over a light pole that was recently installed. The contractor has taken full responsibility, and we are waiting for that light pole to come from the manufacturer. As soon as that comes, we'll go ahead and install it. The contractor will install it, actually. Let's take a look at those pictures real quick. This is the wood firm paved, this is the wood firm school, and you can look at the paving before, and if we move forward, this is the wood firm paving after. Clearly, it looks really nice. Okay, our next project is the Woods Road flashing. The scope of that job was to add flashing to the roof. The wall joint at the new gym where it intersects with the low roof, the probes showed that there is prior install, flashing was incorrect, leading to water infiltration into the wall and into the gym area. We have completed that project, we're waiting a final punch out list, and let's take a look over there. This is the Woods Road flashing before, and this is the Woods Road flashing now it's complete. The next project that we have is right here in this building, which is the Otten Road ceiling. The idea here, or the scope of this project, was to add insulation and a suspended ceiling below the second floor skylight to help reduce the heat, because those that are in this building know how ridiculously hot that second floor can be. So, that is complete, we are awaiting permits. There was a slight delay, however, we are in the process of completing some smoke detector permits that we need from the town. This is what it looked like before, and this is what it looks like now. Actually, we can all go up there if you want, just kidding. So, that's, that's the Otten Road ceiling after. That tile, by the way, will be put in, that one last tile, but that, we had to leave open for smoke detector and make sure that we get that, that permit first. The middle school lintels, we have spoken about, I think, at committee level, and we also spoke to the board in general about the scope of the middle school lintels is to repair and replace falling lintels at middle school doors. Some were completely failed due to water infiltration. That has been complete. Let's take a look at the lintels before, and now let's take a look at the lintels after. Those are now complete. The next project that I want to talk about is Amsterdam Drainage. We have spoken about this project publicly a few times. That gentleman probably represents how we felt at some point. The scope of this project was to install drainage at the front parking lot at Amsterdam. Clearly, this was a drainage, drainage and repaving project. However, we had some issues regarding prior approvals from the DRCC, which prevented us from moving forward with the paving portion of this project. However, the drainage work was complete, and we are working on getting the DRCC approval for the repaving. Let's take a look at the drainage before as they're working. That is actually a picture that I took, and let's go ahead and take a look at the patched up drainage work. So, clearly, they have worked on the drainage, and we feel that they have solved that problem, but the repaving, in our opinion, is also necessary. Let's take a look at the high school VCT flooring. This was an interesting project. We worked on replacing the flooring in the music CST, workrooms, child development room, media center spaces, and we removed asbestos tiles where they existed within these spaces. One of the issues that came up was the contractor, when he put down these floors, I don't know if you can see it in this picture, but they did actually, the installer installed the tiles, and they, they didn't turn them around the proper way. So, on some of them, we actually had the contractor have to come back, take out the old tile that they, well, the new old tile, because if you can see, there is a difference in finish, but we corrected all that with the installer and made sure that they all look like. As far as the high school gym floor refinishing, the scope of this job was to refinish the auxiliary gym floors. It is complete with the final indoctrination awaiting. The issues with this is, we were working on, the old gym was removed from this initial scope. We are going to be completing this work at a later date. Unfortunately, that date conflicted with the sports activities, but however, we are going to finish the whole scope of this job. The high school paving, the scope of that job was just to paint things that we had, actually, this was like from a year and a half ago, if the board members remember. This was something that we were painting classrooms in the 100 and 200 rings, we were repainting door frames in the same wings and the 300 wing, and we were repainting the main gym. All of that is complete. If you take a look at some of the pictures, it's hard to see, obviously, but the walls are freshly painted in some of the classrooms, and if we move forward, again, the walls are freshly painted. The next project I want to talk about is the Triangle Paving, which basically, this meant that we were looking at repaving the play area, including a new fence, and modifying drainage swales. This has been completed, we're awaiting a punch list, but we'd like to take you through a picture in which would shows the completion, and as you can see, that looks great with the fence, so that has been completed. And we're going to have to give some kudos, even though this was primarily, or mostly, or 99% funded by the HSA, our Triangle HSA did a wonderful job in raising over $60,000 to complete this playground, and they were plagued with many challenges, but they were, we were able to get this done. They were actually able to get this done, we'll give them all the credit, they did all the hard work. And I think we have a ribbon cutting ceremony this Thursday, I believe it is.
Friday.
Friday. So, we'll be there as the administration. If board members are available, great, if you can be there. But we'd like to thank the Triangle HSA, because they did a wonderful job, and this is the, the result of that. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you all.
Thank you. I'd like to thank once again, Mr. Whitlock, Dr. Antounas, and Mr. Mahmoud for all of the important work that each of you led during the summer. You can see that we, we did quite a bit of work during the summer, and we're available at this point to answer any questions from the board.
I do, I do. So, I'm trying to put in mind, in terms of the parents and the students that are going to be coming in, the capital, the capital improvements, people are going to be able to see as they enter the buildings or parking lots. For the, for the human resources, they'll be able to meet the new teachers as their, as their students may have, or as they pass them in the hall. And, Dr. Antounas, I was, I was hoping that you can help provide both for the board and for the audience, with the work on the Common Assessment, the curricular development, the professional development, what should students and, and staff expect to be different and better than in the past years?
Well, how long do you have? I can, I can talk about this all night. So... Overall, I'll do very general overall. Our curriculum, as, as you know, is fully aligned with the Common Core State Standards, and the teachers have now been able to work with that curriculum that we've developed over last summer, and they utilized, and we've tweaked this summer to feel more comfortable with it, to be able to provide to the students. We've, we've raised the level, we've raised, the country has raised the rigor, and so, we have followed in kind. And so, the teachers have been able, or should be able, to be in their classrooms, work with the students from day one. All the things that they did at those institutes, all the PD that they went on, they immediately went home and started developing things, because the supervisors got emails from them saying, "How great is this? I can go in, and this is what I'm going to do on the first day of school." One or two of the supervisors were asked to meet with teachers today, actually, to, you know, this is the way I'm thinking about setting up my room for the Writers or Readers Workshop, does that work? Is this, you know, I know we talked about this, does that work for everybody? And those are the kinds of things that, exactly what we wanted to happen. So, you know, we can expect that the, the teachers are more comfortable with the curriculum, they have the materials that they need to deliver the curriculum. Certainly, the technology is there to, to assist in delivering that curriculum, and everybody's ready to, ready and willing to do what needs to be done for the best, that's best for our students.
Thank you. Mrs. Lee?
Just, just brainstorming, because in the past few years, we've had a lot of teachers who retired, and the number of years that they've been in district was just amazing. So, we had this, so to say, institutional wisdom and experience with these teachers. Maybe there's a way to tap into the recently retired teachers to help with the transition with, yeah, 104 new staff members is a lot, and I, I think that for many of us, the school district has a special place for us because it was considered family, and so, the teachers had this sense of continuity and, you know, just, I'm just putting it out there, there may be a way to tap into helping these new teachers as they assimilate into our district by working with recently retired teachers.
Thank you, that's a great idea. We have actually a mentoring program that is new this year based upon the Teach NJ Act, and maybe Mr. Whitlock could, could just describe that for a moment.
Yes, with the Teach NJ, and Teach NJ, the mentoring program is more elaborate. Now, the mentoring program involves current teachers working with the new teachers. Just to address your question or your suggestion, perhaps we can get folks that are recently retired that would want to help out on a volunteer basis with, with that, and it would be strictly volunteer because of pension issues, they would not be able to come back and work with, within 180 days. But, the, the regulations are coming out, and we are going to be doing extensive training with our current teachers and administrators to ensure that we are giving proper mentoring and tutelage to the new teachers that are coming aboard. But I agree with you, there's nothing like institutional knowledge, and you don't like to see it walk out in a herd.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Lee.
Okay. You guys did a lot over the summer, we look forward to seeing you guys do as much over this following year as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kins. The, the last item I have for the superintendent's report is to introduce to the board and the public my recommendation for our new supervisor for Social Studies and Reach in the District. Cynthia Essini was a graduate of Princeton University in 2004 with honors, with a degree in, in Public Issues, the focus in Spanish, as well as receiving her teacher certifications. She received her master's degree from the College of New Jersey and is a matriculated doctoral student at Rutgers University, pursuing her dissertation in educational leadership. She is, she is coming to us from the Flemington Raritan School District and is currently a middle school social studies teacher, and we are very excited to, to make this recommendation tonight, and I ask for the board's consideration to move Item B9 dot one at this time to the floor to consider her appointment.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Item B9 point one from the action agenda.
So moved.
Thanks, Judy.
Okay.
Chris, Judy?
Sure. Any discussion?
Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Surely, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. I'd like to ask the board president at this time for a brief five-minute recess to meet Mrs. Essini, and I think she is also here with her husband as well, if that's the will of the board.
Yes, let's take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back from recess.
I am, thank you.
Continuing on with the agenda, we have approval of the minutes, so I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the August 19th, 2013 regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
Tom Kins.
Jen Lee.
Got you. Okay, the minutes have been approved. Moving on to committee reports, I don't think we've had committee reports, we're actually meeting in committee this week.
No.
Okay, now I'd like to open up the floor to the public for comments from the public regarding the action agenda. Seeing none, let's move on to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education, to approve the staff members for attending the one-to-one pilot orientation workshop, technology training, to approve professional and travel-related expenses, curriculum writing as listed, Common Assessment Development as listed.
On behalf of the Education Committee, I ask the full board to approve Items A1 through A4.
Okay, hold on, I'd like to entertain a motion for, are you entertaining the motion?
Yeah.
You made the motion, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Judy?
Pardon?
All right. Any, any comments with regard to the Items A1 through A4? Okay, roll call please, Mr. Mahmoud.
Surely, Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kins?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of
Motion passes.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of